It's six o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. Are you ready? Do I really need to be loud so loud? All right, there.
Thank you.
This meeting is now called to order. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll start with a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Present.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
And Mayor Turner.
Here.
Would our honored former councilmember Tom Engstrom be willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
That's what happens when you don't come for a while. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to acceptance of our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Kelly, do we have any urgency items tonight?
No, we do not.
Great. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items that are anticipated to be routine and non-controversial, and we will adopt them in total unless they are pulled from the agenda. So for tonight, we have a waiving of the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting, approving minutes of the City Council's special meeting of December 14th, 2017, and the regular meeting of December 19th, 2017, and approving the warrant registers of December 20th, 2017. Are there any items that the council wishes to pull? And are there any of these items that the public would care to comment on? If not, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Madam Mayor, move for the approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And in opposition? Nope. Okay. Moving on to public presentation and requests. Citizen input. Kelly, do we have any requests for citizen input?
No, unless Mr. Kim.
He was, he's in the back.
You want to talk about the cannabis?
I can't hear you back here, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me play closer and speak louder.
Citizens' input?
Yes.
For just the point where... I think he wants to talk about the cannabis items.
Oh, okay.
They may want to wait.
Citizens' input is for items that are under the jurisdiction of City Council but not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to speak on an item that we have scheduled for tonight's agenda, please just wait until we take that item up, and then we'll definitely make sure we have time for public input. Thank you. We should get to that item shortly. Like next, yes. Okay, so council business. We have before us the second reading of the commercial cannabis ordinance. Approve the proposed ordinance adding Chapter 5.34 and amending Chapters 17.08, 17.10, 17.11, and 17.13 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to permit and regulate commercial cannabis operations within the city of Lakeport. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, honorable councilmembers. Before you this evening is the proposed ordinance regulating commercial cannabis within the city of Lakeport. This proposed ordinance contains the various changes discussed and recommended by your council at your meeting on December 19th. These changes principally include prohibiting of cannabis retail activities to delivery only, thus prohibiting storefront retail, limiting retail delivery activities to the C-3 and industrial zoning districts only, and then also removal of the restriction that cannabis retailers be limited to a maximum of two, removing the provisions limiting cannabis retailers to a maximum of five pounds of dried cannabis, removal of a reference limiting storefront retail to 1,500 square feet as storefront retail is a prohibited activity, and likewise, the removal of the reference limiting the display of cannabis at a storefront retail to 50 square feet. I should also clarify an issue that was brought to my attention. If you look at Attachment 4, which includes the buffer zones, a pictorial review of the buffer zones for schools, daycare facilities, and parks. I believe the title of that map is incorrect and it lists only large family daycares. The ordinance does state that that buffer zone of 600 feet would apply to all licensed daycare facilities regardless of small or large. We do have some difficulty in being able to map because we're not, we are not provided with a list from the state of all licensed daycare facilities. So any small daycare facility that looks at that map and doesn't see that they're represented on there, if they want to contact the Community Development Department, we'd be more than happy to make sure that we revise that listing and get them on there as well. Otherwise, staff has prepared a sample motion for the council's consideration to adopt the proposed ordinance. However, if additional substantive changes are made tonight, an additional reading of the proposed ordinance would be required. That's all I have.
Does the council have any questions at this point?
No.
So this is where we would open it up for public input?
Yep.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? This would be good. Yes, this is time, yeah. And what if you get up here, if you could state your name for the record, that'll help.
Okay. My name is Rick Kemp, and I'm a Lakeport businessperson. And I'm here to speak about the cannabis ordinance. Mayor, City Council members, City Manager, Chief Police, and other Lakeport city government people, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak before the council meeting tonight. I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the cannabis ordinance. Sales are estimated to be $20 billion annually with a 20% to 30% growth rate, and within two years of sales of legal cannabis... I should have written this out a little better. Anyway, the sales tax income is expected to be over $1 billion annually. Lakeport needs to get its fair share of that information, or that money, which could amount to actually hundreds of thousands of dollars yearly. You're aware of the needs of our community. By voting yes, you can help fund all of the improvements and increase the quality of life here in our beautiful city. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, Michael Green, Lakeport resident today. That's the only hat I get to wear today. But I do want to thank the council for all the attention they've put on this ordinance. We've done our best we could on the Planning Commission to bring forward a technically correct ordinance. The things that aren't in the ordinance are, oh my gosh, it's kind of interesting out there. And this is a brand-new industry that's unfolding in some very interesting ways. So, as I've said before, it's very rare when we slog through these meetings and we can definitively say a historic moment is upon us, but actually a historic moment is upon us. We've never done this before in the city of Lakeport. Tomorrow, I'm driving down to my hometown, city of Fresno, which actually is moving ahead with regulation, and there's a lot going on there. These are complicated issues, the land use, the buffers, the background checks. And I just want to assure the council and anyone in the audience that this is going to be crazy hard, you know? To pull a license is going to be a hard process. To keep one is going to be a hard process. But the ultimate goal is to make this a safer community and to finally tackle some of the hard issues that go with cannabis consumption and all the illegal things that are going on with it. And we really can't predict where all this is going to go. But we definitely know that we need to do something to turn the corner and make this a more prosperous community and also a safer community, whether you use cannabis or not. Just a technical question for City Attorney. I wanted to make sure that we were procedurally correct. At the last meeting, they introduced several substantive changes that were discussed today. I don't know if that requires a fresh first reading or if we can move ahead with a second reading here tonight. And that was it. Thank you.
Would you like to address, please? So, under the government code, we're required to have two readings of any ordinance. And the way I interpret that is that because we were expressed about what changes the council made at the last meeting, and those changes are incorporated in the draft that's being presented today, that this is the second reading. So because the motion that we had at the last meeting expressed all of the changes at that time, then the public was aware, the public had notice of the first reading. So now we're at the second. And as Mr. Ingram mentioned earlier, if there are to be additional substantive changes, then that would require again a second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Any further public input? Okay, then we will close the public input section and bring it back to the council for deliberation.
One of the things that I looked at was the failure to submit a renewal application prior to the expiration date of the permit result in automatic expiration, and they have to have a 60-day notice. So Kevin, I wanted to make sure that this didn't fall through the cracks. I know that we had problems with the Lake County, I mean, Lakeport disposal, and they didn't get their increase in in time, and then suddenly they couldn't get it, and that wasn't a good thing. Is the city going to be proactive in getting out notices? Or are they on their own to try and make sure that they get that in? Because if suddenly, as of, what would that be, October 31st, Halloween comes, and November 1st comes around, and suddenly it's 59 days, and they didn't send in their application, and then they're going to, it's going to be outside of the 60 days. Are we going to send, like, warning notices or say, "Get your application in"? Excuse me. And also, there's another provision in there for the annual report that needs to be submitted. And I wanted to make sure that we didn't close down a business inadvertently due to technical difficulties. Because people in business, they get busy, and I suspect that they may be busy. And I wanted to make sure that they were given an opportunity to fulfill both of those needed requirements within the time limit. So I just wanted to make sure that we had some kind of mechanism so that the people that are actively participating in a business will be adequately warned about getting their renewals in in time so they won't suddenly be closed down. So Kevin?
Yeah, we ran into this problem in regards to subdivisions. A few years back, the state kept issuing additional extensions of previous subdivisions. And we were missing some of those, and people come in after the fact. And so what we started doing since that time at the Community Development Department, we keep a master index of permits. So something gets approved by the Planning Commission, and it has a specific condition that may have a date reference or something that goes into our master index, and it's calendared so that we pick that up beforehand so that if we need to send a letter out reminding someone that they were supposed to do something by a certain date, or if there's a, you know, an annual report coming up. So we would certainly, in the same token with this ordinance, enter those requisite businesses into that as well so that we'd give them a notice prior to, you know, prior to an expiration, prior to a date when they were required to submit an annual report. So we'll certainly integrate that into that feature as well.
Certainly, like our business license, we always send out a reminder. When we do, we do the same thing for this too.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was taken care of because it would be kind of scary for someone, all of a sudden, you know, it's January 1st, and they come in and they say, "Well, I'm sorry, you're closed down. You didn't submit your application or your annual report at the proper time, and suddenly now you're in violation, so you're closed down." Additionally, I'd just like to thank staff and the Planning Commission for all the tedium and the long, hard-fought battle to try and, you know, garner all the needed information, trying to put together what we have as a, as what I think some people will be borrowing as a model ordinance. And I think that the Planning Department just did an incredible job. The Commission has worked so hard on this and did a lot of the background. And also, the cannabis work group, which it seems that after everything that went on, that the final draft looks almost exactly like what they represented. So kudos to the Planning Work Group, which was made up of... Stacy, you want to let everybody know who worked so hard on that cannabis work group? You guys deserve a pat on the back for all that hard work. Who was that?
Well, it was our mayor, and it was myself, and Chief, and Kevin, and Margaret, City Manager. Is that everybody?
Dan, yes, but it put a lot of time into this.
And Dan, definitely.
Yeah, because this was not an easy thing, and it's one of those things where there's a lot of polarity out there. And I think it's great that we came up with a compromise that I think everybody can live with. And being in C-3 and industrial, I think everybody that lives in the downtown city of Lakeport in residential areas can feel really good that we did something. We moved forward on regulation and tried to realize the fact that cannabis is here, and it's been here for a long time, and this is the best move that we can make under the circumstances with the knowledge that we have. So Mike Owen, Ken, and Mike Ferreo, and everyone else who's involved, thank you so much for all your hard work in the work group. I'm really proud of what you guys have done.
Did you have one question? I had a few points, just for clarification. Assembly Bill 133 was rather formative as far as cannabis quality development at the state level, and our whereas is include through SB 94, but they don't include AB 133. If it's not a substantive change, I would recommend it's an addition just to the whereas section to sort of fill it out. I know we won't possibly capture every piece of state legislation, but since those tend, that tends to be like the last ground setting. I'd like to have that added.
Yeah, if we're putting it in the whereas process, that should be fine.
Great.
We're incorporating.
Okay, then in the actual text of the ordinance, in Section 5.34.09, Section 2, Subsection 4, it's where it's talking about your water management plan, and it says this will include, what was it, a low-drip system or something? It included a specific one. If it's not a substantive change, I would, I'd like to reword that to say this will include but not be limited to in anticipation of developing technology that might be other than that low-drip system. Where are you at again? It's Section 5.34.09. Yeah, I should have? This thing is wrong.
And annotated it.
Okay, 09. 5.34.09, Section 2.
Okay.
Subsection 4, where it says, not what I was expecting.
Permittees shall use best management practices to minimize water use with cannabis cultivation. This would include the use of low-flow irrigation. The permit shall include a plan for water use associated with the cultivation.
Precisely. If we could add include but not be limited to low-flow irrigation, there could be other options that come up that are even better, and I wouldn't want them to be limited to that one specific technology or process.
But they're all going to be low-flow, aren't they? I mean, what, even...
Then I don't know, because I'm not really an irrigation person.
Well, I mean, the point is that it doesn't use a lot of water.
Right, right.
So any new technology would fall under that because it would still be low-flow.
Good, let's not change it.
Okay.
So then my last one. In distribution, I believe, we called out a requirement for a display of the inspection receipt by the Lake County Sealer of weights and measures for all weighing and measuring devices. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there are numerous points during the licensing process where different licensees are going to be required to make sure that their weights and measures are accurate. So my proposal, if it's not a substantive change, is to remove that from the distribution-specific standards and have it put more, have it put up higher. I think, what was it, Section 9, or general standards? Is that a substantive change?
So if you go to 5.34.09...
D2.
D2, subsection 2. It says, "All cannabis distributors shall display a copy of the inspection receipt issued by the Lake County Sealer of weights and measures for all weighing and measuring devices." Now, this is a specific provision, current, in the current proposed ordinance. This is a specific provision just for those seeking a license for the distribution of commercial cannabis. But if I'm understanding correctly, Madam Mayor, that you're looking at maybe moving that to be a specific provision for all license types?
Yes.
Because if you're...
Because throughout the Track and Trace Program, the actual volume or mass of the product that you're accepting and moving is important to keep accurate. So just to keep the same language, but you're different. Is that a requirement?
If we still call it, if we still say, "All cannabis distributors shall display", then it's limited to distributors. But if you are moving it and to apply to all different types of cannabis activities, and you want to remove the distributor, or... then that would be a substantive change because you're now including a new requirement that applies to all...
Okay, so then conversely, by leaving it there, does that, is that requirement, do you see it as problematic for the rest of the points or the other permities?
So to the extent that it's a state requirement, that the Track and Trace program requires this, then it's still a requirement that all commercial cannabis businesses are going to have to comply with. It won't, however, be a specific provision that the city would be looking to when it was granting a permit or reviewing.
Okay, then I'm comfortable keeping it where it is. And I know that this is a, this is more of a living document than our typical living documents. So in future amendments or updates, we can revisit it at that time.
I mean, if it's any consolation, you know, for instance, say, a gas station, a fueling station that's required to display their, you know, that they are in compliance with the weights and measures, that's not a standard condition that we have at the city level that they're still required to do. So I don't, I don't see it being... It's not going to affect, they'll still be required to do it as it's covered by the state through the Track and Trace program, like you said.
Thank you.
I would think that it would be similar to most retail outlets that have produce and meat that's weighed at the store. They need weights and measures. But we certainly don't need to be held accountable for Del Monte green beans that are 15-ounce cans, because those have already been weighed, and stofers, you know, and banquet pot pies. I think they're required at a higher level. So I think that's kind of the same situation.
How would you know all about?
It's occurred to me.
Thank you. Banquet pot pies, for example, gives me a nice level of...
The fuel delivery fee, that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
You did notice that was big.
Is that your favorite?
Okay. So are there any further questions, comments by the council? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further comment, I move to approve the proposed ordinance, adding Chapter 5.34 and amending Chapters 17.08, 17.10, 17.11, and 17.13 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to permit and regulate commercial cannabis operations within the city of Lakeport. Second.
Before we move on, do we want to specify that we are adding a reference to AB 1...
AB 133 in our whereas?
With the added reference of AB 12...
133.
133. Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Congratulations, Governor.
Moving on to our next item. Mayor Turner to appoint councilmembers as liaisons to various boards, committees, and commissions. And secondly, the City Council to adopt a resolution appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings, and represent the city and vote at Division Legislative Committee meetings. So we'll take up that first one. Various boards, committees, and commissions. We have as part of our agenda item the listing that, as we served this past year. And I have not received any recommendations or requests yet for any sort of alterations. So if it's, if I'm correct in assuming that everyone will maintain their same appointments and positions, that's great. Then there is a one new one. This year, our city, it's our turn to appoint an alternate at LAFCO to sit for 2018 and 2019. If Councilmember Parlet is willing to serve, I'd be happy to...
I'm willing.
Great. Okay. Then that would be the only new parts in our list. So if I'm the one appointing, do I have to get a vote on that? Wonderful.
And we will need adoption of resolution.
Right, that's part two.
Part two.
Awesome. Okay. Would the public like any input on either the list, the draft list so far? Okay, then we'll bring it back to me. And I think it's great. Let's go with that list, please. Moving to the second item. We have resolution appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings, and represent the city and vote at the Division Legislative Committee meetings. Is there anyone who would like to sort of give a little explanation about what this means? Before we... If there's anyone interested in being appointed. Margaret, would you talk a little?
Sure, absolutely. The city of Lakeport belongs to the Redwood Empire Division of the League of California Cities, which they, they're a statewide organization. They lobby for the city's interests, and they also have a lot of training for all different areas of the city, whether it's staff or council and mayor's training. So in our division, there is representative from each city that sits in Legislative Committee that they go over all the legislation that's being proposed, and they decide to say whether they want to approve this legislation, whether for it or against it. And then they send, then our committee's recommendations go to the board, the full board of the League of California Cities. So there's, it's a great committee to be on. You're, you know, updated on all the new bills that are coming out, all the ones that pretend that would impact cities directly. And so it's a really good opportunity to see what's coming up. And then also, all the councilmembers are invited to the quarterly meetings of our representative also.
Thank you, Chair. So for our business meeting, for the division, we need a primary and an alternate. And then we also need a primary and an alternate for the Legislative Committee.
Do we normally do the same primary and alternate, the both?
We do, yeah.
We normally do one.
Doesn't make it...
So, yeah, I would suggest that we have the mayor and Mayor Proten as the primary and the alternate.
And by the way, our mayor is the president of our division right now.
I'll also be serving as the...
So she has to be there anyway.
You'll probably be there. And you'll probably be there.
Good. The meetings are really interesting. Okay. Then if we, if I... Would the public like to comment on this portion of the item? No? Bring it back to the council for a motion? We are adopting a resolution.
I'll make a motion that the City Council adopt a resolution appointing Mayor Turner and Councilmember, or Mayor Proten Barnes to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings, and represent the city and vote at Division Legislative Committee meetings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you. Our final item for the evening is City Council Communications. Start with Margaret.
Comment?
David?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Nothing to report?
I've been very silent this meeting.
I'm breezy this day.
I know.
Nothing to report.
Chief?
No report tonight.
I have nothing to report?
No report? Councilmember Spur?
No report.
Councilmember Parlet?
I want to thank Doug for letting us know, thanks to Stacy, about the problem with the asphalt and explaining it at a meeting because I was approached by a former asphalt professional, and he was asking me what was going on. And I was able to give him a somewhat detailed explanation of what the problem was, and that it wasn't some fault at the city of Lakeport, but it was a formula of the cold weather versus hot weather asphalt. And I thought that was great, and I appreciate... And I appreciate Stacy asking the question and Doug answering it. It shows that we know what we're talking about.
I'll be here all year. I'll keep asking.
The other thing I wanted to tell the, the council is, is that I talked to our former finance director, and she was complaining that our, that the finance director over Nukaya was just coming home from a meeting at 12:15 at night, and that we should all be grateful that our meetings are over early.
Oh, you mean you talked to his wife?
Yes.
Oh. Wow.
So he's earning some of that extra money that he's making. Congratulations to Dan.
Poor guy.
And I see that the new mayor is doing a great job getting us out of here very early.
Yes, this might be a record. Councilmember Medina?
Happy New Year. Glad we're in a new year and we can move on to some new work.
Great. Mayor Pro Tem Barnes?
No report.
Oh, I did have one other thing. There was--
Sorry.
There was somebody, somebody, this is communications, somebody came in and accosted me about the judging of the Christmas lights.
No.
Was questioning whether or not, I was on the committee, and I said I had nothing to do with it, because they were upset that they did not place first, and they worked so hard on it. And I said, you know what, we really appreciate the effort that you put out, and you made a big difference along the freeway for everybody that drove by, and thank you for your effort. And she took second last year and took second this year, and she's like, a little, you know, she worked even harder, and so it was nice to have people out there that really want to win, because that's what makes it such a great contest.
And it was an awesome display.
It was, yes. And they don't have all the money in the world like some of the other people that took first.
You sure you did?
That was actual communications, and I wanted to pass it on.
Totally losing control of the room here, so. On that, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone for attending.